I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, delivered into justice for all.
First item on the agenda will be Kevin Evanson, he was requesting permission to lay black plastic and also move in two Conex boxes on eight zero eight zero highway two south in the west. Has he like submitted a permit application or?
No, he just wrote me a note now requesting to be on the special meeting agenda for those two reasons.
Okay. I guess in my opinion, the black plastic, the stuff he's already got there looks atrocious and on top of that, moving in anything other than a trailer to haul stuff out. I just, it's.
Some's gotta be done there.
Well.
He's not gonna make any setbacks with that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's when.
Yeah, I don't know. But I mean, he puts them in there, that's just another.
Yeah.
Well, he brings in more junk than, I don't know, it's not a good situation.
I mean, I would say the situation would be that this property is out of compliance, so you really can't grant any permits until the property is in compliance. I just don't see how you can do it any other way, it's.
Anybody find anybody to clean up then or?
No, nobody's really interested. It's kind of a specialty project, when you think about it, because even the people we've talked to that do that kind of cleaning, they're just, nobody really wants, most people that do cleaning, it's like a state scenario or some, you know, to actually do it to somebody's property is actually like, kind of, living there, just nobody really wants to mess with it, it's a tough deal, so. So the search continues to find somebody that actually wants to clean it up, you know, but. I don't know if we can, Kevin claims he's gonna clean it up, he has cleaned it up in the past, that would be an ideal scenario, so nobody's gotta get involved, but that's not, doesn't seem to be working, and now it seems to be getting worse, so, I mean, as far as, I think the only improvement that I've noticed is that he did move the vehicles on his property again now, which is.
Yeah, it's got black plastic up all over now.
Right, I mean, it's.
Is that roadway blocked for you?
Pardon?
Is that roadway blocked for you?
No, not right now.
Okay.
I've noticed in the trees north of the field there, there's an ice house in there now too. I don't know if it's his, it's on the motel property, but it's facing my field and I don't know how he has access to it without going into my field.
Yeah, I don't know, whatever, I think it's been long enough, I mean, we gave him enough chances.
Well, I agree with that, but short of sending the road department, then I don't know who else is gonna do it, so.
Then I have to do that.
If they don't have time.
Well, if it's gonna happen, that's definitely not gonna happen very soon, because there's just too many responsibilities in that department right now, so that's, I mean, we're just gonna have to keep exploring, obviously there's gotta be somebody out there willing to clean it up, I guess, we'll just have to keep, keep looking. I do have a couple other new leads that are just, people have sent me in the last couple days here, I'm trying to reach out to some of them guys and see if, see if anybody's interested, I don't know, I mean, it's, like I said, the few that we've contacted that are even more like on the commercial side, like at Arrow Cleaning, all that kind of, did you ever have any more luck with Ben or Trash Incorporated or anything or?
Arrow would do it, yeah.
Okay.
It's just, I'll have to get an updated bid, because I think their last bid, it was over twenty thousand, I don't remember the.
Kevin? You can sit up front here, Kevin, we're discussing your property right now, so.
Okay.
So if you want to sit up to the microphone. So I think the conclusion, just from the discussion we've kind of had in a short amount of time, is I don't think anybody's, anybody's really in favor of you bringing anything else onto the property until you get that thing under compliance, so. As far as the Conex boxes or this black plastic or anything, I would say it's a no, I mean, above going to evoke the discussion is, is nobody wants to see anything else onto that property until you start cleaning it up, so. And honestly, like Commissioner Miller said, I don't even know if you have the room to set some of this stuff in there, depending on the setbacks and stuff, I mean, where, I mean, where would you even plan on putting them, on the north side of the house?
Put a Conex box?
Yeah, that what you wanted, the two Conex boxes here is what it says.
Right, right up in front, the wind is from the south and the east, and then from the west. And I would like to put one there to start with, and that's, there's plenty of room there.
Well, that might be plenty of room, but if it doesn't honor the setbacks in our ordinance book, I mean, you can't have structures, you know, certain spaces from the, center line of the roads and like the frontage yards, there's all kinds of different, I mean, that would be probably, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, that's more of like a residential type.
Yeah, that'd be forty from the main road and fifteen from your side.
Right, so all the different setbacks that would comply to that would be different than, you know, other parts of the county, since that's more of a residential setting, so.
Yep.
Okay.
What size box were you looking at?
Well, either a twenty or a forty, but we, that's yet to be decided, because I have to have some dirt work done first before that would happen. Forget it, love, because it's quite a taper on one side, right, but the slab. And then after using my slab as a work area, and that's a thirty by forty slab, and wind is the biggest issue. And that's what I wanted to do, is just to make sure that we could use that plus storage, because I just only have two lots. And I've been roofing, carpentry, concrete, many things, so. Wish I would have had a larger lot, but I don't, so I am gonna make, do with what I have there, and I have a thirty by forty slab with FEMA.
Hello?
Radiations, it's almost.
Dan?
Heard it's a traffic, building permit.
I'll just, we're just in the middle of the meeting and I'll just be myself.
I did it in a progression of several years.
You're on, we're going, so you're live on the microphone.
The time made it so that there was no longer any way we could do that, other than Ronnie Burks, his, which cost a lot of money and a lot of questions and answers about it before he was able to do that. And. Yeah, I understand, so right now, I'm gonna retire, and I'm gonna have a retirement business, which is gonna be an edumann and/or support a lot of the contractors like I have before. Many of them might do that until I got called to go to the pipeline. And I'm on reducing all the stuff that is, stuff from the pipeline and the.
It's hard to understand, I can't hear, I mean, when he says I hear a muscle, that's it.
He's not gonna be on two.
Yeah, Dan, you're probably gonna have a hard time hearing just through the phone too, though, so I'm sorry, I don't think it'll get any better.
Okay, okay.
Well, I, I mean, I, yeah, I think just to keep this from taking up way more time than it really has to, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I just, I just know, I mean, we've given the ample time to clean it up, it's not an ideal scenario anybody wants to deal with, and I, I think, in my opinion, I don't think there's any way I can support it greater than anything until that, I mean, that yard basically has to get just cleaned up like a normal yard, I mean, the stuff you have, I mean, the vehicles, the everything, that's all just, there's just too much there, there's just too much going on, there's.
All the vehicles are gone?
As of late.
Like I told you before, we had, through the, we've given thirty day, or every sixty days, a progression of different things over the period of two or three years on the road that goes around. And that is clear and clean from everything that was there, stuff in the building, and I take stuff out to work on. I just don't know what else to say, and I've had some of our officials come out there and take a look at when we're taking the fence down, and those golf cart doors, and that was given permission to do that at the end of the meeting, and then everybody went against it, and it was, you were in objection to it, and it sure was confusion here. So, I don't know what else to tell you, other than I have no vehicles other than two in the yard. No, they've all been taken care of, and they've all been dealt with, if that's the vehicle. And I had a few trailers, and I always had trailers, one for shingling, one for concrete, just like a lot of people have an enclosed trailer, I was a shop teacher and I, I budgeted to get that, and I did old half ton trucks, and I would not have to load it in on, because I didn't have a large facility or a building to put stuff in, so I did, I'm back into a pickup truck. And I still have some of those, and planning doing what I said, taking care of that, everything, they're gone.
What did you say, Joe, is, when, when, when would they be able to come clean it up for us to deal with?
Well, they'd probably be able to do it pretty soon, I guess, they just want some assurances from the county, and try to enter into some sort of agreement.
Kevin? I guess, Kevin, we gave you a lot of.
I haven't had any time at all, I have an injury, severity shoulder, just got back from the doctor yesterday, came back, special meeting, so that I could tell you that if the Conex box is not something you wanted to do, that's what I will change my plan.
But Kevin, this has been going on for years and years, it's not fair to all your neighbors over there. It's not fair to your neighbors that they have to, that, they have to look at that mess all the time and.
The fences were, the fences tore down, that'll be up by Memorial Weekend. The green fence is falling down.
The wind is there, and it's never been an issue, nobody's ever looked at the photos, I can, I can probably see that, I've checked with people. Okay, so if you want to have someone to come and do a visit, I'll do that, I'll show you.
Yeah, no, but Kevin, I mean, we don't really have to look at photos of your property, you can see it from the highway, I mean, everybody knows, like, I mean, you're, like, your defensive is trailers and that, like everybody else, that property is not like everybody else's, Kevin, it's, it's obvious, and we work with you, and we work with you, and we work with you, so. I'm just gonna tell you that right now, like, one, you'd have to probably fill out a building permit for us to even give any kind of permission for a Conex box, like, just, we can't just give you permission, I appreciate you coming in and asking, but you'd probably have to fill out a building permit, which judging by the discussion we've had, probably wouldn't get approved, but, that being said, you can still follow the process. I think the other thing, just for the sake of time and discussion, because we have other things we need to discuss, is we're exploring options to find someone to come in and bring that property into compliance according to the judgment that we have. If you want to keep working on the property in the meantime, the more you improve, the less we need to get done, or maybe nothing would have to get done, that'd be great, but if not, we are going to bring that property into compliance, it's been long enough, and I understand your thinking as far as, your belief that it's not that bad, you have representation and ideas of what you think that stuff is, but it's just not in compliance to anything close to what is acceptable, at least in the area you live in. If you live five miles out of town, probably wouldn't be a big deal, there's probably worse properties in the county than yours, but yours is right in the public eye, in between two of those places, so, and I'm just telling you for the sake of time, because I don't want to spend forty-five minutes on this and push everything else off, and we're here all day on it for something I think we're all in relative agreement in, which is that this property just has to get cleaned up, so. I would say work on it as much as you can, for as long as you can, as hard as you can, and in the meantime, if we find someone to bring it into the compliance, we're going to do that. Is that a fair enough comment, or does anybody else have anything?
I think, I think that's fair, but if, the only thing, you know, if, if you don't get it cleaned up, maybe you should hire somebody to help you get it cleaned up, because if somebody comes in and cleans it up, and it costs fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, that's gonna come on your taxes. So if you can hire somebody to clean it up for two, three thousand dollars or whatever, you'd be, you'd be ahead that way. I understand where your point is, and I argue the point that there's been, you know, much of a review as far as, you know, looking at the things and the photos that Sheriff Sanders has got, and or that's been available to you, now, that's during the winter, in the fall, in the middle of the winter, then in the spring of the year, and of course, it's snow and everything, so you're just cleaning up, so I do that. Now, I have a few sheds, and they have things taken out, and then I work on things, and I, that's what I'm doing right now, and that's what I'm trying to do, is to place myself with actually having a work area, so that I can do that, I've purchased a lot of power tools to have, like, a area to work and assist with the power tools, like, shot tools to do the bench, table saw, grinders and everything else, and I, I surely have a dump trailer, surely have people coming to help, and I haven't been able to help, because I've had a shoulder that's been bad, it's been bad to the point, no use, and now I have hired people to do that, and that hasn't worked out really well. So I do have people, like the papers I provided for everybody at the last meeting, which I hope you could take a look at that and my suggestions. On that, that's fine, I know you have to do, and you have to make decisions, and I'm asking for those two people to be assisting you. And if you, if you can't do that, you know, I have, I have to cover myself legally as well, then I will. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a small matter, but it's a big matter to you, and I have done it, and I think that's gonna help me with my area on the slab. And I ask that that be allowed, and for a period of three months, whatever, until we can make decisions on, on a Conex box. Whatever, I have my house that I'm going to be changing the windows on it, and I have a contractor hired to do that, where it's the north side of a house, it's a two by four, it's cold, hard helps the heat, and I would like very much to deal with that, so that I can get that up to standards.
Well, like I said, for the sake of time, if there's any improvements you want to do with the property, you're just gonna have to fill out a formal building permit and something for the meeting, so, and I think that'll be it for that.
I invite one or two of you to take a look at the photos with me, if that's something you want to do, and then it would be, you know, checking with my legal person there too, to see what ramifications went out.
All right.
Okay. Just so you know, Kevin, if you get somebody to come in, they're gonna come in and clean it up.
I understand. Thanks for coming in, Kevin. So next on the agenda will be Skylar Gravewitz with Graveling and Road Projects Discussion.
Twenty questions. Guess we're just here to decide or talk about the Seventeenth Avenue project, correct?
Yep.
That's what we're here for. I talked to some different contractors, I only have gotten one price back so far, some of them are still working on it. So, I think, I think it's manageable, so.
What's manageable?
I think the project's gonna be manageable, if we want, if we decide to move forward with it, so.
As far as like us doing it ourselves or?
Well, us doing it, you know, the in-house of spreading gravel and stuff, and then having a contractor haul the gravel, at least getting it to us, you know, so.
That concludes putting the fabric down, correct?
Yeah, we'll put the fabric down, but all we're hiring the contractors for is just to deliver the gravel, which is always our biggest, biggest hurdle is work or manpower, so.
So the bid that you got from Russ Lawler ends on the I C?
No, Russ didn't do this project.
Okay, well, that's a different.
This is for the, Russ Lawler Construction actually was the lowest bidder on the, the color replacement.
Oh, so that's on eighty-eight, that's a different, okay.
That's a different one, no, I contacted a couple local guys, and they just were too busy, they couldn't get to it.
Sure, okay, so then that was, I thought that was the bid you got for Seventeenth Avenue, so.
Uh, nope, no, I, just one so far, and I'm, I don't want to say what it was, because.
No, that's fine, I, I just, that's where I was a little.
Right, nope.
When it said manageable, and that's where I was kind of thinking, okay, we're, we're confused, but I was confused, all right.
Yeah.
So, you're just waiting on some prices maybe for Seventeenth Avenue yet to?
How long is the bid open?
Well, we're not really, we didn't put it out for bids, we're just, it was.
You did contact it.
We were just contacting people, because that's what we decided at the last meeting, we definitely can put it out for bids, but it's gonna be well under the two hundred thousand dollar threshold, so.
Right, don't we have to put this out to bids?
Not if it's.
Not if it's under two hundred thousand.
Under two hundred, right?
Yeah.
Probably wouldn't hurt to get bids, though, I mean.
Well, and I, I think, just to clarify, the main reason we were even seeking some bids was just to even see if it's like, I mean, if we're not gonna get a bid that's, like you said, under two hundred thousand dollars, then it's like, do you decide to create a project and put it out for bids, or do we just decide to tackle it ourselves? If somebody was there that, you know, like Skylar said, we're doing some of the work and we're having a contractor come in for X amount, and it was a manageable amount, just to get the project going, then I think, suddenly, I mean, it was more like seeking estimates for some hell of essentially, not necessarily a bid, like, probably like this eighty-eighth street was a federal aid project, big job, that was totally different, so. Basically, you were just seeking, if somebody could even help us and what they would want to help, and where they could, because not, not everybody would have been available to, let's say, do the whole project, but they would have been able to maybe install cauldron or do some gravel hauling or something, just so we could split it up, so we didn't have half our crew up there for two weeks, but.
Yeah, so it pretty much just was looking for getting the material to the job site, because that's our biggest hurdle, so.
Right, is getting enough there, fast enough to actually get it done.
Yeah, so.
So then you think your plan is to probably do most of the work ourselves?
Yeah, I mean, the, I mean, even pounding the object markers in and stuff like that, we'll do that in-house, so. Pretty much the only thing we'd have to, pretty much hire out would be the delivery or the hauling of the gravel, just to get it there in time and faster, and, and we don't, and we don't ruin our workforce, you know, it'd probably be two, two guys, you know, one on each end, one loading the trucks and one spreading the gravel, and then when we do the, putting the object markers up, it'd probably be two other, you know, at a separate time, and then we'll have some rip wrapping up there too, which we'll do, try to do in-house. And that's probably three guys, maybe four at that point, but.
What were you planning on looking at, starting on it, or?
Uh, I was telling everybody we'd probably sometime in June here, if we were gonna move forward with it, it'd be sometime in June, so. Because it's drying up pretty good, so, it's hardening up, so I think it'd be time to tackle it now.
Okay. So you're anticipating probably starting, I mean, even if you don't get anybody to bid it, and then if you do get someone to bid the gravel hauling, that's gonna kind of be towards the end anyway, right?
Well, no, I mean, that's, that's gonna be the start of the project, is the gravel hauling, like, we can't do anything until we get the gravel there anyway, so.
Sure, I suppose it won't take you long to put the fabric and all that.
No, and we gotta put it down, I mean, you lay it out, you, yeah, we're gonna have to build it as.
Sure.
As we're going, so.
Okay.
Start of the project will be gravel, pretty much, so.
But does he have any idea how many, what would you grab, how many ton?
Uh, yep, five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six. About, if you do end dumps that are roughly fifteen, fifteen tons of end dump, it's about, just, just shy of four hundred loads, it's like three ninety-three or something like that, so.
It's a lot to do with one or two trucks, so yeah, I could see.
Yeah, so, I was telling everybody I wanted like four to six end dumps, so, or dump trucks, so, that's kind of what I was going, telling everybody, just because we don't want to be waiting forever for gravel to show up and then, stuff like that, so kind of figured about a two week project, two week window.
Because you really wouldn't be able to use like side dumps or anything with that, because you, I mean, you probably could, but to turn around and you have to.
Yeah, it's very, very, with the slew on both sides, and it's.
Yeah.
More a narrow window here, so.
The shaft's pretty hard.
Yeah, so.
So would that be putting rock on the sides too then, or not?
Yep, right at the, right at the end, we'd put rip wrap to protect the gravel.
Right, that's what I figured, otherwise it's gonna be in the same bowl.
Yep, we'd have to.
Yeah, you got a big ability with rock.
Mr. Rock, there?
Uh, we're looking, no, there's no rock, there's a few spots that we've, there's potential that we could get some rock, that's the bad thing about doing it, now everybody's, where's the rock?
They're gonna let you on the land.
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem, is they've seeded it, but there's a few spots that we could probably potentially get it from, so, um, yeah.
You should secure that before we start, right?
Well, I mean, then we're gonna be into next fall then, probably. Worst case scenario, we can haul from the shop out of Linton, I mean, we have some in the shop out of Linton, so. So it's four hundred and sixty-seven cubic yards of rip wrap is what they figured, so.
Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to do the whole project and have a big storm come up and.
Anyone with a rock.
Yeah.
Right.
I think you better secure what we need to do before we start doing it. That's my opinion, and get it written down on paper, commitments, they aren't gonna let you go in on land this time of the year, as soft as it is, and these crop, crop fields, no way. I don't think, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's what we wanted.
I mean, the trouble is, is you're gonna have a hard time getting into a field until after harvest, if that was the case, so there really isn't a good time to do it, you know, I mean, so, I mean, no matter what, you're probably gonna end up looking at maybe just probably paying for some damages or something, I mean, that would maybe be, you know, I mean, you'd have to probably just work it out as a part of the deal, would be like.
Well, I'm saying, you just don't want to go do the whole road project, and you don't have any rip.
No, I agree, but I'm just saying, I don't think you're gonna get around the idea of having like the ideal situation to get into a field, so we're probably just gonna have to look at some kind of compensation or something, you know, you're just gonna have to work it out with them, where it's like, hey, well, because what we've done in the past is what, if somebody go out and measure it, or maybe you have a survey crew, if somebody's in town for the, you know, you go measure your road, and you try and do as little damage as possible, and calculate the acre, you know, if you've got three acres or whatever it is, and try and come up with, I mean, because otherwise, you know, if the rocks in a cornfield, we're not confident until September, October, like, well, to wait to do the project then, then it'll get too cold, so, I mean, you're just probably gonna have to.
So how much rock do you have out there?
Well, probably enough to do it, but that's a long ways to travel it or truck it, so I mean.
Right.
There's, there's another place that's a, it's not super far, but it's a little further, but it's kind of out in a pasture area, so they probably, we haven't talked to them yet about it, but.
Probably a little bit easier situation.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, if, if they want the road fixed, they're gonna have to, landowners are gonna have to work with us a little bit, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, the next part is, even if you could haul some of it from Linton, I, you know, because you think about your trucking costs versus paying for damages to an hour, depending on what someone would want, if someone's really gonna help you out and work, great, if, if someone wants thousands of dollars, well, you could start debating hauling it from Linton probably, because it's gonna be mostly pavement until you get up to, you know, to Braddock, I guess, so. In that theory, you could justify hauling some of it from Linton at least, and maybe just finding some closer rock piles from people that are willing to help out, or. I mean, I don't know if it'll be too big of an issue, most people are pretty good, and especially getting rid of rock piles is, I mean, I mean, most people.
Like I said, there's a lot of farmers that bury them.
Right, so I think the idea, right, I mean, even if you give them a dollar or two a yard for rock versus then burying it, it's probably a better situation, that might be all they want, and, you know, I don't know, we'll just have to check it out. You got some leads on rock, could you say?
Yeah, we're checking into it.
Okay. One other thing with road discussion, since we're talking about, I know Warren Vanderworsen talked to you about kind of doing a small tiling deal on, I think it was Ninety-Eighth and Seventh, he said, or Seventh, there you go, and then he sent some stuff to Josh here, he kind of just talked to you on the phone, basically, what he explained, he uses this ditch full of water all the time, and it kind of impacts the road, and he would like to.
Yeah, he said he'd do it all.
He said he would do it all, and he would, he would tile it basically, drain it on his land and everything. He's basically seeking permission from the county to work in the right of way, so.
Right, so that corner, that's the corner of Seventh and Ninety.
Yep, that intersection.
Yeah, what it is, is a hill in the ditch, and it, it holds in that corner, and you can either tile it, or you can just cut the ditch out, or cut that hill out in the ditch and drain it, I mean, it's been like that for years, but if he wants to, I mean, that's.
I guess in my opinion, out of the, I mean, if, if you just, you know, start supervising, make sure that the ditch gets reclaimed, you know, so there's not, you know, some huge hole or some, you know, impediment sitting in the ditch or something like that, if he wants to tile it out and drain it on his land, I, I guess, give him the permission to do it in the right of way, is, you know, I don't really see a problem as long as he brings the ditch, you know, backed up to different reason, you know, it doesn't leave a huge dirt pile or some pipes sticking out five feet or something like that, but.
There's been times that's been underwater for quite a while.
Right, and I know that's one thing he had kind of admitted, is that the road is not a high-traffic road for a lot of people, but for him and. Right, and I know that's one thing he had kind of admitted, is that the road is not a high-traffic road for a lot of people, but for him and his couple neighbors, it is a big deal, and so that's where he's basically just taking a plot himself to kind of drain that part of the ditch there, which.
How much would it take to cut the building?
Time.
Right.
Time, a little bit of manpower.
I guess in my opinion, tile it now, even if you did wanna cut the ditch down, maybe it's a long-term thing, that's fine, but in short-term, if he can drain that ditch out and help that road out, so we don't have to go and, you know, I mean, a road that, no offense to anybody, it's, it's only important to probably handful of people down there, and he's recognizing that, I mean, he admitted it, that it's probably not gonna get on the priority list, so. Like I said, my big thing is just, you know, that it just gets reclaimed properly and stuff, so it's in decent shape, and I, I'm knowing Lauren will probably do a good job, so I'm not really too worried about it, I guess, so. The main thing would be is if we're, if we're okay with him working in the right of way, we just basically make a motion and go on that we're giving him permissions, so it's on the record, and that Skylar kinda just oversees that it gets put back the way it should be. I mean, we're looking at doing the same thing kind of back by, uh, uh, Albert Knowles and all that down there, and even when Ellison was here, so I mean, the theory of tiling the ditch out to get it to drain, especially, it's not like it's draining twenty acres of water. I guess I don't see any harm in trying it, especially if Lauren's willing to do it on his own, if it doesn't work, then I guess the next one would be to cut the ditch out.
Excuse me, Lauren is willing to tile it himself at his expense, or the other two guys?
Yep. He said the only thing he's seeking.
My opinion, give him a brief life and let him tile it out at his expense.
The only thing he's seeking is permission from the commissioners, just because that's, to work in the right of way, you have to do that, so, yeah.
That is what you asked, yeah.
So, I guess, unless there's any more discussion out, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner really makes a motion to grant permission to Lauren Vanderworsen to basically tile the intersection of Ninety-Eighth Street and Seventh Avenue onto his own property, at his own expense, and, uh, and to be supervised by Skylar to make sure it's reclaimed properly, I know it's a long motion, but we should probably include all that. Is there a second on that motion?
Second, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
There's a culvert in that intersection, isn't there?
I think there is.
It's pretty tough to tell there with the water.
Time to play the last ones through, or I have to go through? I had to go through, about to get through it, but.
What's he gonna do, horizontally bore in with pipe?
I think what he's probably gonna do is probably just dig at some point in the ditch where he can get the water to drain, and just trench it into his property, where he can daylight it to another drainage spot, is kinda how he explained it to me, so.
He's gonna go about three hundred feet.
Has anybody booked that?
I know Skylar had kind of been in contact with him, and then Josh, Lauren sent us a bunch of pictures we're looking at here down, and then, uh.
Where is it located at? I mean, as far as drive, I don't understand these streets, I guess you can find it, where is it from Lawrence Place West?
Yes, it's, uh.
Straight south on Seventh.
Roland Dornbusch's land right there, but they're buying it, he said.
Yeah.
They rent it, but they're in the process of buying it. Um, but he's looking at doing about three hundred feet along the ditch, and then the hill goes down to that creek right there.
Right.
Yeah, cause the hill's probably about three hundred feet away from that intersection, he just wants to get it over there.
Right.
So then it'll flow into.
He's getting it over, getting it through the high spot, so it'll drain out into that green ditch.
Yeah.
What is that identified as a wetland?
No, it's just basically, uh, basically it's a road that got built, uh, you know, probably never drained properly in the first place, cause it looks like that's kind of a slew area anyway, so it it's just one of them roads where it has a low spot and it sits there full of water.
Okay.
So, I don't think there's no real wetland.
That's just more, are you? That's not Dornbusch.
Oh, okay.
In my total.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Joe, you got any comments?
Well, we'll just let him do it, I think.
Well, I mean, like you said, it looks like just a low spot in the ditch, it's full of water, so. So we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Permission approved? So. Next, uh, discussion, anybody got any more, starts graveling road projects?
The only thing I wanna grab is, uh, you know, when we gravel roads, sometimes I'd like to see hidden spots that are really bad. Instead of graveling ten miles of, uh, gravel on a road, where there are certain spots in certain areas, you know, with the, you know, on hills or something that probably need it, and the, I think, you know, when we find, hear about it, we're going out and doing it. That's the only thing I, you know, instead of putting gravel on a fifteen-foot stretch that probably doesn't need all that gravel, you know? There's certain hidden spots, you know, but, like I said, the minute they come up, I think you're hitting them.
Yeah.
Let me tell you.
I guess, is there a scenario where you're, where we grabbled where we shouldn't have grabbled?
Well, sometimes we have a project where we, uh, we did, oh, we're gonna go do this whole road. Does the whole road need it? I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I think that's why we're, we're, we're trying to go to, to, to do that, of hit more like the whole road and get it all done, instead of this spot graveling, cause I think that spot gravelings was
It's causing problems.
Starting to cause us problems, cause we're not getting enough down and.
Okay, I, I, I just bring up, you know, because, uh, we, you know, have enough gravel, or we can gravel certain areas that really need it. That's the only animal.
Fine.
Go ahead, Dan.
Statement?
Yep, go ahead.
I looked at it and calculated this out, that what you showed us, thirty-two mile stretch in the northeast part of, they used a part of the county. If we do that on a twelve-hundred mile span of road system that we have in this county, at five hundred and forty-nine K, on a thirty-two mile stretch, on a three-inch wave, divide that thirty-two into twelve-hundred miles, what is it, X number of units would cost us right around twenty million dollars on our twelve-hundred miles of gravel roads within the Emmens County infrastructure. There's no way that it's economically feasible to do this. I feel that you have to go out, and I'm just not trying to tell you what to do. But I think from an economic standpoint, that has to be done with the blade operators, with the superintendent, to go out and mark these bad spots, flag them, put them on a map, then put this out on a bid, on what you want done in these bad spots. But I just don't feel that we can justify thirty-two mile road structure at five hundred and forty K or five hundred and twenty K. It sounds good, but I don't think it's realistic.
Right, well, I, I mean, uh, if we go out and flag bad spots and you still get a total, um, your thirty-two miles might be seven hundred and some thousand, you know, cause it's the distance of trucking and stuff like that's your, will cost so much money, so. You, I mean, do you get what I'm saying? Um, if you have five spots on this road, and then you gotta move to the next road, and there's another five spots.
Yeah, but that's part of grabbing in the road system. You just, I just don't feel, guys, and I, this is just my opinion. If I got a bad spot in my yard, I don't gravel the whole yard, I'm gonna gravel the bad spot. It's just, I don't know how we as a county can afford that kind of, uh, upgraze on every thirty-two miles within the county. And I'm not trying to handpick against anybody, but it's just not feasible. That's my opinion.
But I don't, I don't disagree, I just, I, I, it seems like it's, no matter what you end up doing and stuff, cause even like, I mean, we dumped twelve-hundred loads of gravel down in the Westfield area, and there's still bad spots, so like, at the same time, graveling these entire stretches, you're still gonna have spots that get a little thin, I mean, like even, like, I mean, even like on the road going to my place, that got gravel on hilltops two years ago, and now it's like five hundred feet down the road is a bad spot now, so, again, it's kinda one of them things where I, I agree with the spot graveling, but I also under, understand graveling a whole stretch of road, cause it seems like that next part is getting thin, but it's still good, well, then you thicken up this spot, and all that thin spot looks thinner, and that, like, it, I, I think, I mean, the graveling of the roads is just kind of a, it's always gonna be a moving target, cause you get this road done, and then a half mile down the road is another hill spot, and you're just, you're never gonna have consistent even coverage on an entire road, so, yeah, it's, it is, I, I agree with Commissioner Matt Terry on the sense that, yeah, when you start putting five, six hundred thousand dollars on thirty-two miles, it's, it's just hard to swallow, and I'm I'm a huge advocate of hiring out the trucking and doing all that, and I still think we need to do it, but, yeah, we probably just need to, I don't know what the right answer is, to be honest, so, yeah, cause even like you said last year, I thought it was a slam dunk doing, you know, over a thousand loads of gravel on Westfield, and, I mean, some of them folks basically claim their road is as bad or worse, so I don't even know how to explain that, and that, a lot of that gravel came out of that cattail pit, which we know isn't muddy, so I, you know, sometimes it's just hard to, it's hard to describe, but the right thing to do is even look at that road at Cattail, you guys reshaped it, then you gravelled it, and then two weeks later, there was one or two slick spots, and everybody wanted more gravel, it's like, well, we just put an inch or two on everything, and it was already had gravel, so.
I think a lot of these roads.
They're gravel roads, it's a tough field, guys.
Right, that's what, I mean, that, I guess what I'm trying to get at is that no matter what, like, you know, majority of the people might be satisfied, but there's always gonna be groups of people that think it should be better, and, and so, you're gonna have to come up with a consistent way to try to improve the roads, graveling a whole road does make it probably better, but then like you said, you're only gonna get, you know, thirty-some miles done a year, well, you'll never get it done in time for the next patch of roads to go bad again too, so it's, I,
Forty years.
I think we're on the right track, but we probably do have to, I, I don't, we're gonna have to look at it a little differently, maybe being a little more surgical than probably just doing an area, just because that didn't.
Right, I think there's a lot of gravel on the size of the roads too, if a guy gets out in the spring and pulls that all in.
Well, and that's, I mean, that might be a part of that discussion too, cause it seems like when you guys do pull shoulders, I mean, yeah, you bring a lot of junk up, there's a lot of gravel and good material on the road too, so. But then that all takes time too, it's just like everything, every time we commit to doing something else, then that's less time to pull shoulders, or, you know, so that's where it's tough, no matter what you do, there's always gonna be spots that need gravel, that's never gonna end, so that always.
Never ends.
Right, so.
Well, didn't we have, uh, didn't we hire the engineer to come out and check these roads, or?
Well, that's, I thought we did.
Well, that's kind of a part of the project we did though, was working with Wald, and they, they, I mean, we kinda gave them an idea of what we wanted, and they kinda crafted a project slightly, right, Skylar?
Right, they, did they physically come out and look at all these spots? No, like, they've never done that, like, what you guys are, I believe they're talking about, no, they've never physically come out, cause that's, it'll get super expensive too, for them to come out and just do that, or we already know that. So it's just, where do we go? Like, that's what the thing is, is we, spot graveling has been done for years, and it just doesn't seem to be working, so we gotta change our way of thinking sometimes, I know, it, it really puts it into reality that you get thirty-two miles, and that's only three inches of gravel, so if you had an inch on the road already, then you got, that spot's got four, if there's nothing, then that's got three, so. Like, it really puts it into reality when people call and say, I need gravel, well, it's not just five bucks and you get it, it's, it gets very expensive, and it's a very time-consuming, and everything like that, so. Yeah, I mean, yeah, if we wanna go into trying to be more surgical and try to pick up a few bad spots, and maybe pick some bad spots in that area, but I, I'm just, I think it's, we're gonna end up kinda with the same, same price, if not more, because it's your trucking was cost so much, so.
Well, I, I guess my.
You're covering more area.
Right, I'd say that, I'd say to piggyback off the conversation, so that we're actually probably getting to a point, or at least in my opinion, is probably picking, let's say you do accumulated thirty or forty miles, but you try and spread it out off of each gravel pit a little bit, and try and be surgical on some of these roads, I mean, that's, I mean, that might be something worth trying, maybe it doesn't work, I don't know, but we, we did continuously gravel an area last year, and, I mean, I just don't know if it was any better, like, I mean, I mean, obviously, uh.
We didn't go as thick.
Well, the other trouble, and that's one reason I'll bring it up too, is because like, when you say three inches, it's like, well, just cut it down to two inches, well, we did about an inch or two of that cattail road, and I had several calls thanking us, and it turned out so great, it looked nice, and then it got a couple rains on it, and then people were calling asking for more gravel, so an inch or two didn't solve it anyway, and it wasn't even that, I mean, it was a bad road when it rains, but it had gravel out of two, and then we added an inch or two, and, uh, I think it was Emerson that pulled it up, and, you know, and it was in nice shape, and so that just tells you that even two inches of gravel, it's like, you get the great rain scenario, it's not gonna be good enough, so.
Well, that's, that road's so wide, though, it's hard to maintain.
Well, this was actually the road going north and south.
Yeah, ninth.
Right from the gravel pit, that intersection, going to about that bridge or close to it, they reshaped that, and, well, when Dave was down blading, and then he pulled that up, and we were hauling gravel over spots, and they hauled gravel on it, and it was, it was really nice, it was, but it couple rains in.
But you look at new construction, they're on there with rollers and packing the whole time they're laying that road. Then they come with gravel, and they're packing that again. Totally different than laying this loose gravel on these roads. You can lay loose gravel, and it turns to snot when you get rain on it. That's just the way it is, it's not packed hard, hard, with a compaction, with water, they're on these roads, and they're spreading water, and they're packing it, they're rolling it, and they're shaping it, and they're rolling it. It gets to be almost like a blacktop initially when they build these roads. But you lay this gravel on there loose, and you get rain. It's a mess with this black ground you're bringing up with these shoulders, it's a mess. I seen what happened on that road from, what is it, Eighty-Eighth going south to Westfield, that half section, where they pulled it up and rebuilt it, bringing all this dirt up, and then throwing on, I don't know how many inches of gravel, but it wasn't packed, and it turned to snot like this spring was terrible. And that section from the Grosse to Road South was terrible, where it got pulled up, the gravel thrown on it. You couldn't even drive it. So I think the big thing is, we could gravel, we can lay four inches of gravel, unless there's water thrown on it and packed. I just don't feel that you're gonna get a good firm base. They're gravel roads with new gravel just sprinkled on top. That's my opinion on that deal, guys, I don't really know what the answer is here. But it's, I think we need more miles for our duck to spot gravel these roads. To justify bringing somebody in and having laid out on a map, a master map, where they need to be dumped, they haven't picked that. That's my opinion.
I would agree with Dan.
Well, yeah, I mean, after thinking about it, I mean, thirty-some miles is just not, it's just not a lot of miles for that, so we have, probably after we think the way we wanna do it, right?
It would take us forty years to get around the whole county.
Right.
If you have plenty of time to get around, you start, I mean, you, you wouldn't get, you wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah.
I, it's twenty million, but it's probably cost more or less, but just calculating out, calculating it out on a thirty-two mile span within the twelve-hundred miles. Just put the thought.
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody disagrees with you, that it's, uh, it's a lot for what seems to be not much road, so, it's
Yeah.
Kind of the reality of things too, so we're probably gonna have to just be a little more, I mean, whatever we decide, we'll just have to make sure that it's, you know, the best decision possible, I guess, so. Is there any other road projects to gravel discussion?
Tell them what, did you go out to Tony Gollet or Michael Gollet? He called someone and said, thanks for doing what you did, but, is that just a temporary?
That's just a temporary fix, he's gotta move his fence, so.
That's the call of a collapse, or what's it?
They're concrete ones, and they were never tied back in the day, so they're just separating, so they gotta be dug up and re-tied. So, yeah, I just need to get his number and call him and tell him he's gotta move his fence, or we're just gonna cut it. But I'd rather give him the chance to move it first. It is technically encroaching, so if he doesn't wanna move it, I'll just move it myself.
Okay, or he just asked, he said, thanks for what you did, but he just.
Yeah, no, it's, we're, probably later this week, we're gonna try to get there. There's two over there, there's one closer to the intersection, and then one a little further down, there's two, two concrete ones that are separating. We did the two prior ones last year, that are further to the east or west, we did those, we tied them.
All right.
Yeah, no. Have you been out to Sixty-Seventh off by the river off eighteen oh four? Have you looked at that hill? Sixty-seventh, oh, no, but, that's another place that's got gravel. Um, twenty twenty-two. Right. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah.
See, I, Chris Reitman, did he talk to you in regards to those trees that are on the right of way, that they were willing to cut down? And that on the road shoulder is were willing to remove the stumps, did you talk to him and look at that project? Down by David Reitman?
No, he, nobody's contacted me yet.
Did he speak to you?
Not, not about trees, I guess.
Is Joe in there, Hanson?
Yep, up there.
Yeah, Joe's here.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna tell you, Joe is here now. I was just gonna tell you, Joe is here now.
Joe's not in on this meeting?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, yeah, Joe's here.
Chris spoke to Joe?
Yes. You hear me now?
Yeah, I hear you, just got real faint, but go ahead.
Yeah, I talked to Chris about it and, um, and I talked to you about it and, um. I, I kind of, I'm hoping that we can get something done there where Chris said he was willing to cut the trees down, but. He needed some help because if he tears the stump stuff, it's gonna ruin the structure of the road, they're so close to the right away. So he wanted to know if the county could help out with, um, either the removal or. Or to fix it after he tears them out, something like that, so.
So we have to have Skylar run down and take a look at it, correct?
Yeah, he'll probably have to look at it and try to figure out that's something that they can help with.
Well, I guess we, we gotta just make the decision of where we stand on it, um. Do we wanna help them out, do we wanna, I mean, technically they're trees, right, and they're right away. Should've probably been enforced a long time ago, it kinda falls under that encroachment deal. I'm not above helping them, I mean, if that's the, if that's what they wanna do. If they're that close to the road and we're gonna ruin the road structure by ripping them out, I think we should just grind them out, like, take, take the majority of them out and then, or like. Cut them and then just grind the rest.
Well, he, he, he had recommended that too, so.
Yeah, I would say you wanna grind them rather than dig a big hole in the ditch and make a soft spot, so.
You know, I guess if, I'm willing to work with them, if they have a spot to get rid of them and it's not gonna be a huge cost to the county, I think we should. Anybody that's willing to help us take care of their, their problem, um.
Well, he'll take the trees away, right?
He said he'd take a couple days, calm down and.
So he'll take the trees away, it's just a matter of, they want to know about the digging part?
Yeah, it was, uh, the grinding or the fixing the road, yeah, that's what.
Yeah, if you're gonna cut them down, I'd be all for it.
Yeah, if we're gonna, if he's gonna cut them, like, I think we should just rent the grinder and.
So you're thinking you'd run the grinder for the skid loader or something, like an attachment?
Yeah, just go in and grind them down and be done with it.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm all for getting rid of trees in the right way, so, but.
Well, and I think that wouldn't be a bad kind of. Policy middle ground, you know, if we have the stump grinder and we grind the stumps and make sure that we're not wrecking the, the road at all and then, you know, they're taking the tops off, basically, that's kind of a. It's kind of a neutral ground thing and grinding it out, so like, you know, you send one guy out with a skid loader and the attachment, it's not like it's a huge. You know, burden on us to go and.
There's quite a few there.
Get these stumps, why, I mean, it'd be a lot, but I mean, you're gonna have this problem every year, it's, it's all over the county, I mean, there's trees in the right way all over, I mean. Pick apart of the county there, there, I mean, a lot of it's like a watery type ditch and the trees kinda kept going, nobody could get in to cut them out, now they're too big, now that, you know, and. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not really any one person's fault, it's just, it's, cause these trees are, I mean, some of them are fifty, hundred years old, I mean, it's been. But if you look at a map of the entire county, there's trees and, there's trees in the right way and probably in almost every road in the county, there's one tree or something in, in the right way, so.
Part of nature.
Right, and I think that's where I think we'll probably just need to meet some middle ground, it's probably asking a lot for everybody to just eliminate these trees and it's asking a lot of us to eliminate all these trees, so if they're gonna take the tops and we grind the stumps, I think that's a nice middle ground, I think that's something that can accommodate. I think it gets trees out of the right way, like Skylar said, I mean. You got an issue with it every year, we might as well just start doing it maybe a certain way, either we're not doing it or we're doing it, I, I like the middle ground every year, so.
No, I like that because if he, if the farmer's willing to help us out instead of us having to take in the whole expense or time, I'm, I'm not for it.
Especially because we're probably protecting the road bit by grinding that out, making sure it's not that way too, versus getting dug out, so.
I haven't driven down to look at how much it consists, I have no idea. If it's a mile, a half mile, quarter mile, eight mile, I have no idea and how many trees.
It's a half mile or better, it's probably a dozen or more trees, I would say. I mean, it's a fair amount.
Yeah, it's quite a few.
It's gonna be, it'll be a lot of work for anybody, you know, I mean, even grinding the stumps, I mean, that's gonna be a couple days or the work minimum, I mean, that's gonna take some work, but.
Okay, okay. So what do we need to do, do we need to make a motion, we're gonna take somebody, run down and take a look at it? Or are we just gonna go do it, or do you need a motion to do it, or what do you?
Well, I think if he cuts them, then we'll just let us know when he's done cutting them and. Rent the grinder and.
Yeah, he cuts them, he lets us know when he's done and then we go there when we got the time to do it.
That could be, that could be a fall project, I mean, because, I could cut them ground downs.
Well, you have to cut down, that's the big part, then, right, you just get it ground out, you know. And, you know, maybe mark them for an output flight line or something, so somebody doesn't drive over and mow, throw, mow across them or something, but we're just trying to get it done soon as possible.
His ditch, he'll know about the road there.
Not everybody that's in your ditch is here, you know, there's people that have a ditch like that. So. I guess, I mean.
So are those David's trees, or whose were they?
I don't know for sure.
There's no right away or easement recorded for when it left the section line. There's, if you look at it, there's things recorded, but they have a road on the half mile there, so there's easements and rightaways for that, but not.
So there's nowhere Hundredth leaves the section line?
So that's not even our road?
I'm not gonna say that.
Well, that's one of them things where it looks like it's like a deviated section line. They couldn't build it on the section line probably from that giant ravine and stuff, so they kinda took the path of least resistance. I would, I guess in my opinion, argue that that. I mean, would be our right away because that's literally just a section line road that went around for about. Three quarters of a mile there till it got back on the section line, I mean.
It's very steep through there if you ever get up there.
They worked around nature, didn't they, to create the road for people to make movement?
I would say they probably didn't create a right way for that because it's just getting interpreted as the section line right away essentially, so, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would, I would argue that probably would be our right away on that one, I guess, since it is one Hundredth Street and, well, one, so.
Okay, yeah. I'm gonna drive down, I'm gonna drive down and that's what.
Well, I, I'd say what we would probably do, cause I don't, I doubt this is something that he's sitting at the trees waiting with a chainsaw right now, why, why don't we probably put it on the agenda for the next meeting, which is roughly, what, two weeks from now? And people can take a look at it, maybe Chris has a better interpretation, we can get some more conversation on it and then we can probably come to a conclusion at the next meeting or something. Is that fair?
Yeah, let's do that, yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, I'm all scared for that.
Okay.
I'll be down there next week too, so check it out.
All right. Okay. Any more gravel in your road project discussion?
I guess, do we, did we decide, are we gonna move forward with Seventeenth Avenue, was that what the consensus was, or?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say, um. Especially if you're planning on doing most of the work in-house and you're looking at just hiring up gravel hauling, I would say that's, you know. That's probably gonna be a manageable.
So what is he looking at for a price, a window, window price for that gravel hauling? You must have some kind of an idea in your head.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're, we're less than, less than seventy grand. So, could be.
I'd say for the sake of security and bid, you probably don't wanna say.
Right.
If you say a number, that's the number that's gonna be bid at, right, but, uh.
That's right.
But, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, you got an idea of what you're gonna spend or what you think is reasonable.
Yeah, all said and done, we should roughly be hundred and fifty grand into it. That's, that's with the fabric, the gravel, the signs and every, and the rip rap and. That's, it's a rough estimate, no, it's not in stone, so, yeah, I mean, okay, that's what I need to know so we can move forward, so.
Well, I would say we have to move forward with it unless anybody's got any other. If that's the number you think we're gonna be landing about, I don't think there's much choice, especially after the last meeting with, I mean, if a lot of that stuff is salvageable, the fabric and all that's staying in, then it's not. I mean, you might as well go for it and we'll just build on top of it from the time it comes to hopefully get it rebuilt.
Were you putting a culvert in?
We're gonna use people within the county to hire all this gravel?
I've called some local guys, they all said they were too busy, so, I mean, I did call some local contractors and they even gave me numbers of other local guys, um. So, I, I gave them the opportunity, but.
So there's no locals that'll do it?
Not, as of now, no, I have yet to find any that will do it, I mean, we're, I can still look, I mean, we, we got a little bit of time here, but. Now, I even offered them to get together and work, work as a, you know, one guy be the general contractor and bring on. Some other trucks, you know, and that, that didn't seem to.
I suppose nobody has end dumps here though, really?
Very few, but, so. So, yeah, no, I, I, I tried, so.
So you're gonna replace the culvert too then, or?
I think that's part of the master plan when they're all said and done.
So you have to dig it up again and put it in?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna have to put in new culverts anyway when they, when they grade raise it, so.
Well, that's why I was asking, if you do it now, they want us to do it later.
Yeah, just talk to them.
Well.
Well, you'd have to put a culvert in wide enough to accommodate the, the widening of the road, cause that's kind of what happened with like eighty-eighth, we're dealing with. We grade raised that road without messing with the culvert and then you buried it, but technically if you don't. You'd have to put in a culvert, you'd have to know the width of that culvert and put it in right way, otherwise you're probably gonna bury it anyways, so.
Right, and they're working on that now, I mean.
Right.
Designing the new projects, or they're designing the builds, so.
You'd probably just have to open cut that part of the road, the culvert essentially, right, so.
Yeah, they're gonna just have to do that, I'm guessing, so.
So is that committed, that road out there by Sanger Lake, that did is committed to someone to do that culvert in place of, correct?
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, it's, we, yeah, I mean, we gotta, you guys just have to accept this bid, I guess, so.
So when will be the bid be submitted, is it in front of you?
Yeah, the bid's been submitted and then, I, I think Skylar basically just accepted it as the lowest bid, or not Skylar, but DOT, that's the local, that's the federal aid deal, so.
Okay.
We have that resolution now, so the, the bid went to. Russ Waller for. So the resolution is for Russ Waller Construction and the low bid amount was two hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay.
And that is for culvert project on eighty-eighth, right?
Correct.
So that's over.
So they gotta go to Copper Dammer up there too?
Yeah, I believe so, I mean, that's, it's all in the specs what's, what they want it done, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't really have a whole lot to say, it's DOT and federal aid projects.
Right.
We don't, it's just happening in our county and we kinda get to oversee it a little bit, but most of it's all regulations and everything is done by the DOT and. Stuff like that, so.
So the DOT overlooks that project, right, the state, if you get a federal aid vote?
Yeah, I believe like Wold will be there as the engineering firm and stuff like that.
Okay.
But, yeah, all the paperwork and stuff like that goes to the DOT and.
Okay.
Yeah. And that, that's on the agenda for after Skylar here, Dan will be there.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's next on, so, um. The only other thing to, uh. Uh, bring up, I guess, was something that probably got missed or whatever, was, uh, the last meeting. And I forget the street, it's the one that Joey and Deb Culver live on. Fifty-six, fifty-fourth, that's up there and that, but that, and that was that, kinda that detour when eighteen oh four was down. That was kind of a part of that detour, but that one, that, that could use some gravel, fifty years.
Doesn't he live on?
I don't have my playbook with.
Fifty-seventh, right, cause it comes off of fifty-eighth, off the highway and then it goes down and then jogs around.
Yep.
Right, so, yeah, we talked about that, myself and the blade operator talked.
Uh, yeah, kinda out there coming up eighteen oh four, yeah, fifteen now?
Yeah, it's fifty-nine.
It's north of Bernie Benji, isn't that the first road that goes east?
Right, I just know, you, once you get back in that area.
Fifty-nine, right?
I think it's fifty-nine.
Yeah.
But that one definitely at least could use some spot gravel and I know there was a few spots on some hilltops, the three.
It's not the whole road, they're just spots that need gravel.
Right, yeah, there was some.
Talked earlier, just spots that need gravel, all the way over to the four corners.
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we actually, the blade operator and I, we were talking about that this morning, so.
Okay.
Okay.
It's on, it's on our, it's on our hit list, just.
Okay.
Were you up to Brad Stoppler's, did they take care of that yet?
He bladed it, but he, no gravel yet.
Okay.
And that's, that, we really should bring that up, and that is what, Fourth Avenue going up there?
Up to his place?
Yep, the third.
Fourth Avenue is the one that goes in Monty Dribbles.
Third, so, once we get up there, so, how do we wanna work that now, um? Fifty-six goes, or Third Avenue goes all the way up and then it kinda becomes a private drive. It is kinda listed as fifty-eighth, right?
Yes, for addressing purposes.
For addressing purposes, so do we just go to the corner and turn around then? Cause that's just. I think this is the only way we're ever gonna get these all figured out is if we just bring them up as they come up and then work through them, because. At what. One could say the whole road's is private drive, but a good portion of it is on the section line, then when you turn the corner, then it becomes nothing. So then it becomes kind of this private drive, so, um, cause it is, it's kinda black and they want, started wanting gravel, so, um.
Skylar, I got a road you gotta take a look at, two culverts at the place that we possibly last fall, or early, early this spring, but I think it was last fall. North of, uh, Stoppler's gravel pit and as far as southwestern part of the county, which is just. I think the drainage comes out of some land at Jerry Heisean. The culverts are placed north and south, there's two of them together and there's one farther east that was placed. The two of them that were placed side by side or close to each other within probably two hundred feet. Those culverts on the north side of the inlet side are set too high and the water that's coming from the watershed. Is undermining those culverts where they weren't set deep enough, Skylar. You need to take a look at that, they're gonna wash those culverts out where it's undermining those culverts. Take a look at it.
Okay.
You don't wanna talk it?
Yep, I know where you're at.
Okay, those two culverts, I believe Skylar, I was down there earlier. I think it's the farmost east culvert of the two of them that were placed close to each other, where the water is undermining that culvert. Where it wasn't set deep enough in the hardpan of the soil. Take a look at it. That is?
Yep, we'll, we'll look at it. So, do you guys wanna do Brad Stoppler's all the way in, or? Stop the corner and?
And from the rest of the way in is private drive, right, you said?
You look at the map, yeah.
So about a quarter mile to the east is where the section line turns to private.
Yeah, it's a quarter mile right there. I guess it is, I bet you guys are out there, I think.
Are you talking about the hydro?
No, no.
We're talking about the road that goes into Brad Stoppler, so it's Third Avenue. Was that northeast or, no, that's southeast, yeah, Third Avenue southeast and fifty-sixth street southeast, so.
So it'd be what, two and a quarter mile off the hardwood, or off the gravel road?
Well, that all, that's all gravel there, Third, that.
From fifty-ninth to north.
Yeah.
Or two and a quarter miles. Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, yeah. Well, I'd say we'd have to probably stay consistent, so I'd say do it all the way up to that intersection and then you'd probably go east a quarter mile and then after that, I mean, if there's a right way established or nothing like that, that one's pretty tough, I mean. Some of these like one Hundredth where it continues on and goes back to the section line, I could argue that deviated off and that's still right away, but this one, that road probably wouldn't exist if it wouldn't be for Brad's yard there, so it's. I don't know. Kind of, I would, like you said, you kinda have to keep it fifty-six for nine-one-one purposes and all that and, you know, establish that it's a road, but it's, um. You know, if it's not on the right way, it's pretty tough to be going off the rightways anymore, I'd say you have to just stay consistent with that, so. So I'd say about right where that water starts essentially, that's almost like that quarter mile there or so, so.
Right.
That patch looks like they stayed on the section line as long as they could until they basically went into the lake, so.
Great.
So pretty much what it looks like where that field ends kinda, it goes like a smoo, that's kinda where they deviated off the section line, so. So pretty much what it looks like where that field ends, kinda, it goes like a smooth, that's kind of where they deviated off the section line, so. Like it's moved in a hundred years, obviously, so, I would say go to that point, and after that, people have to consider that private driveway, they'll have to gravel rest themselves. If you're gonna stay consistent, that's how you gotta do it, I guess, so. Okay.
And it doesn't mean we're gonna get gravel tomorrow, like it's, it's on our list.
He's good with that.
So it's, it'll, we'll put it on our list, so.
Right.
That's the best we can do, so.
Okay. Well, I'd say for the sake of time, the agenda, we'll have to move on to the next item, which would be the rest.
What about that Jim Hyde deal, is that resolved, did you get the evens in place, in sign?
Well.
I talked to Rodney and Bonnie, are they okay with it?
Okay.
I don't know if George drew anything up or not.
I haven't drawn up, but I haven't, and they're in an envelope, I haven't mailed them out yet, so.
Okay.
I just make sure that that's still the plan.
I would say nail them on, if you get signatures on them, then we can probably go ahead with it.
Yeah, Rodney and Bonnie said they have more troubles.
Okay, yeah, I'd say nail them on to the landowners, if you get signatures, so go. Okay.
I love, I've got the Bonnie and the Wendy's, so they're all in favor of it.
Okay, yeah, well, good, if it's, if it's a situation like that, it shouldn't be hard to get signatures and then square it with the right way, so. Right, next item on the agenda will be the resolution for road project, I think it's SC, is it? Cause the resolution says SC, but the agenda says SC, so it's SC one-five-three-six, parentheses zero-six-one, culvert replacement, half mile more than five miles east of Strasburg, which this was that Center Lake slash Regent Gate Street project, and, uh, looks like the DOT and the local government, I think it was up the branch that does it, has awarded the low bid to Russ Waller, so the resolution was emailed to you guys. Says whereas the bid in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents from Russell Waller Construction LLC received in the bid opening of May tenth, twenty twenty-four for project SC dash one-five-three-six, parentheses zero-six-one, was locally received, whereas this bid is considered reasonable, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, MS County will award to Russell Waller Construction LLC the contract for said project, and hereby authorizes the chairman of the board to sign said contract. It is further understood that the county shall reimburse the North Dakota Department of Transportation for any payments under this contract, which are not collectible from the Federal Highway Administration. Which I think that's like, if you do add-ons to the project after the fact or something, they only pay for X amount, so if we had them do something else, that.
They would be, right.
Right, they would be responsible for anything outside of the project, I think that's kind of the wording for that, so. So anyway, that's the resolution, which was emailed to you guys, um, are there any thoughts, questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve Lawler Construction to do the job.
So Commissioner Hall makes a motion to, uh, approve the resolution, seconded by Commissioner Terry. Any more discussion on the resolution I just read for the culvert repair project? Any more discussion?
Is that the total replacement, or is that just extensions made?
Uh, total replacement.
Okay, okay, alright.
Is there any more?
That's all I need to ask you, okay.
Were, were they putting one culvert in, or two, or?
Just one.
How big of one was that?
Well, I, I don't know, I have to look at the specs.
That's an eight or a ten foot culvert, isn't it?
It's a big one, I remember that.
So are they taking out the old ones and putting them in, or are they just putting another one in?
A replacement culvert.
I believe they'll probably take one of them off.
Yeah, I'd say, I would think they're taking that off.
Well, there's two or three.
They're taking it out, replacement, I believe, if you say replace, they're taking it out and putting it back in the same cavity.
Yeah, but I think there's more than one there.
Yeah, there was, there was three, well, I've heard there's up to three of them, so.
You might find more once they start digging it, that's, uh, I think that road's been raised.
Why do you worry about this beyond me when that road got built up?
Well, everyone's been built up so many times, I just think it's one of them, I mean, if the culvert was way underwater, I don't even know if they realized there were them, the culverts there, you know, I just, so it's, I mean, it's.
But is it on the DOT's structure, Matt, just on his known roads?
I don't know, they couldn't find them the last time I.
Yeah, I don't think so. So, any more discussion?
No.
Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, approved. Next item on the agenda will be the emergency declaration for the courthouse ADA handicap ramp.
We talked about maybe, for any emergency?
Right, because that's where we're gonna find, find the funds to fix this handicap ramp, so we can maintain our status as a poll location for elections.
They talked about that ramp right on.
It'll be the ramp outside the social services over there.
That's the only entrance for any ADA, I mean, we need to.
And we've actually been notified that it's a problem, and if we don't fix it, then it's gonna affect our status as a poll location, which would be a pretty big loss to, at least to Lynn area for sure, and the whole county, but especially Lynn area, cause this is the only polling place, hasn't known, so.
For anybody that needs, you know, to use a handicap entrance, employees.
Right, I mean, you have to maintain a handicap entrance, but.
Need to be ADA compliant.
I mean, significance of it especially is like the local, the poll, I mean, that's where the, the big issue comes in with, I believe, was it the state or the?
Help America Board Apps, that we need to update.
Right, so I mean, that's where it's kind of pushing it in over, that we should probably handle it with the project we have going on, the renovations, courthouse seems like a good time to do it, so.
Yeah, I believe it was thirty-two thousand.
Now, this renovation and upgrade, isn't that always mandatory, that you have a handicap accessibility?
Right, and we have, we have handicap accessibility, it's the condition of it that they're concerned about, that it's.
That's deteriorating.
It's difficult to use and it's deteriorating, and I mean, it's time for an upgrade, it's.
Are there automatic door openers out there? Yeah.
Yes.
Better?
Yes, there are.
Okay, just wondering.
And a part of that ramp upgrade was gonna be some of the, there was gonna be, I think, a microphone and some camera.
I think we already have a project manager in place, and it's a good time to get it done.
Right, okay, so, that's basically the, the reason for the emergency declaration is that we can access the funding, since it is something that we need to do in a time restricted manner, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So anyway, um.
I'm in favor of it, I don't know what the field uses, what the other department.
Any thoughts or concerns?
I think we've gotta get it done.
Yeah.
Right, I think we have to get it done now, so, let's say, uh, would entertain a motion to approve table or deny the emergency declaration?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the emergency declaration for the courthouse.
Commissioner Hall makes a motion to approve the emergency declaration for the courthouse ADA handicap ramp, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller, is there any more discussion? Emergency declaration. Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Alright, opposed? Emergency declaration is approved. Alright, uh, next items will just be the utility permits, there are three of them, looks like Oklahoma for South Central Regional Water. First is the utility permit for South Central Regional Water to install, maintain a one-inch real water line crossing Eighty-Eighth Street Southeast from the north half of Section twenty-five, Township one thirty-one, Range seventy-five, to the south half of Section twenty-four, Township one thirty-one, Range seventy-five. So assuming the reason for these utility permits is they're boring underneath the county road.
I don't.
Will they present it to you, Skylar?
Yep, I looked down, signed them, I don't see any conflict.
Okay.
How deep do they bore, Skylar?
Uh, it says in our permit, is it minimum eight feet?
Six.
Six feet below that dip line?
I think it's six feet below the bottom of the ditch was, was the minimum.
Six feet.
Six, six feet below the ditch bottom is the minimum depth.
Okay, okay. I'm sure they're gonna do it right.
Yeah, I'd have to worry about it.
They don't want it to freeze.
Right.
So it looks like we also have, uh, it's another utility permit for a one-inch real water line crossing Seventy-Second Street Southeast from the north half of Section two, Township one thirty-three, seventy-seven, to the south half of Section thirty-five, Township one thirty-four, seventy-seven. And then, uh, the last one is a utility permit for South Central Regional Water to install and maintain a potable water ten-inch PVC pipeline for service to Ashley. So it's crossing Nineteenth Avenue on Seventy-Eighth, Nineteenth Avenue on Seventy-Ninth, and Twentieth Avenue on Seventy-Ninth, so, we looked at that one, too, though.
Yeah.
So that's all being done by the state water line?
No, uh, yeah, South Central Regional Water's doing it, I'm assuming either Paul's or Doug Smith is probably supervising it, so.
Okay.
That Ashley one, that's a, that's a ten-inch pipeline, so that's probably gonna have more than one person, there's probably gonna be a lot of people on that one, so. These other ones are one-inch lines, I'm assuming those are just residential or, you know.
Right.
Something those smaller, so. I guess I would entertain a motion to approve table or deny all three of them, unless anybody wants to be individual.
I'll make most.
I'll make the most except the boring underneath the county infrastructure.
Okay, Commissioner Terry makes a motion to approve all three utility permits for South Central Regional Water, seconded by Commissioner Everly. Is there any more discussion on the utility permits for South Central Regional Water? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Permit's approved. And, um, last item on the regular agenda is the resignation of Wayne Haley for Director of Tax Equalization. Coming to my elders, he turns in two weeks' notice, right?
Who is resigning?
Wayne Wayne Haley.
Yeah, for the tax director role.
Right, when did he?
Friday.
Friday?
Says basically in the letter here that, uh, after these last nine months in the position, I've come to the determination the tax director job was just not for me, I appreciate the opportunity I was given, but ultimately did not feel that I was up to the task. That's what the letter said, and then he's just pursuing another opportunity, so. That was turned in on May seventeenth, so, I guess the position of Director of Tax Equalization is unfulfilled, so.
They're tough ones to find.
It's not a fun job to have, so.
No, it's not.
I would say, uh, unless anybody's had any other opinions, we'll probably have to open the position up and seek applications for qualified individuals.
How long is he working it, do you know?
He gives two weeks' notice.
Two weeks from the seventeenth, so.
Thirty-first will be his last date.
First of June?
Yep.
You're doing June?
Yeah, I would open it up as soon as you can.
Yep.
May thirty-first will be his last date.
So I would say open up the position as soon as possible.
We do have, we do have county equalization, June third, so. Sometimes you're just gonna sit down with him to see, you know, look at the notices that increases and what's gonna doubt, and hopefully we can make, you know.
Reform the A-team of Josh, Adella, and Marcy to get us through the equalization again?
Looking forward to it.
We should be better at it this time, right? Okay, well, uh, that's, uh, sad news, but I mean, is what it is.
Too bad, I thought he was there long-term, big time.
Yeah, well, that's.
It was a hard job, it's just a lot to learn.
It's a tough job, right, it's, I don't think people understand the difficulties of it, and it's got its own issues, just not only learning the job, but following through with it, it's tough, so. Wish Wayne well, and we'll, um, fill the position soon as possible, so. Okay, uh, the only other items will be some miscellaneous, uh, building permits. First on the agenda is a amended building permit for Jesus and Taylor, Mazurani, to move a twenty-eight by ninety-five modular home and add a forty by sixty-eight garage on the east half, the southeast quarter, northeast quarter, Section thirteen, Township one thirty-three, Range seventy-six. Seems to me they were gonna build a house and then they ended up purchasing a modular, should have just amended it.
So there's a minimum, a maximum.
Location.
Aye, it's at the same farm, basically in the same exact spot, it's offset from the house, or from the road, hundreds of feet, so.
A few hundred yards up.
Shouldn't be any issue with that, so.
It's just to sell updates records for the tax office, letting them know what's going on.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny the amended building permit for Jesus and Taylor Mazurani.
I made the motion.
Commissioner Miller makes a motion to approve?
Approve it.
Approve it, sec, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Everly, is there any more discussion? I would be abstaining due to a conflict of interest, so. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved. Terry, you wanna sign that one? Next item on the agenda will be a building permit for Bradley Stoppler to move a twenty-eight by fifty-eight home and add an attached garage on the southeast quarter of Section ten, Township one thirty-six, Range seventy-seven. I believe this is a similar modular pipe home, a farmyard.
Yeah, regardless if it was private road or not, he's, his setback's good.
It's well off the setback.
Yeah, it's hundred fifty, so, that's the road we just talked about, so.
Okay.
So they really wouldn't even, if it's a private road, whether it's a mountain, I guess.
Right, the setbacks are good enough.
Still good regardless, but he's putting it right here.
Sure. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny building permit for Bradley Stoppler.
I made the motion to approve it.
Commissioner Miller has, uh, made the motion to approve, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Everly, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved. Next is building permit for Aaron Kurnis to add onto the storage unit on Lot two, Track B, Section fourteen, Township one thirty-two, Range seventy-nine.
That's right in the yard, right? Where he's got that storage unit?
Oh, that's out at, uh, Bator Gate, right?
At a restaurant?
Out at Bayside, right?
Oh, his campground right here, oh, he's got the storage unit, he's just adding two more.
Especially on the west side of the constructed building, right, for use still?
E, east side is the one it looks like.
Yep, he's adding on the.
Towards eighteen oh four.
Okay.
Yeah, just adding two units, um, I double-checked his, it is posted, he is thirty feet from the back, I found the markers there. Subtlety, he's doing the exact same dimension, just adding two units, so.
Correct.
He owns the highway, correct?
Yeah, and then he owns the stuff now, oh, he's on the, okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny the building permit for Aaron Kurnis, I'll make a motion. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hall, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Permit approved. Next is a tax abatement, parcel three zero, dash zero zero zero, dash zero four two one one, dash zero one five, tax year twenty twenty-three.
The value according to Wayne, um, I think Vanguard did some assessing on it, and they have the year incorrect, which causes the valuation to be higher than it was supposed to be, so he's just asking for a, um, tax abatement, so we can lower the valuation back down. And refund, when you overpaid in twenty twenty-three.
Sure. Looks like the valuation changed by about sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Which from a ninety-nine to a twenty twenty-two home, that's probably realistic, so, where's the, this would be down at Blindwood Acres, so that'd be the, behind Jack Doctor's place on Long River there, that, that's that new, we've been kind of proving parcels back there over the last year or two, so. Anyway, I might entertain a motion to approve table or deny the abatement, refund of taxes.
I made the motion to refund.
Commissioner Miller makes a motion to approve the tax abatement, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hall, any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment approved, last is the county deed for City of Strasburg, Lot six, Block four, the original town of Strasburg City. I believe that's a situation of the city is buying a property for a dollar, that was back on taxes.
Set down in that lake, or is that?
Right behind that deck, that shed, that deck, shed, that little building there, there, on Main Street, right behind it. Across the alley.
I believe that was the Grimm property originally.
Where is that located, is that the old Rennie Schwab house? Just north of the back telephone?
Yep, yep, yeah.
Okay, on the corner, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's the White House on the corner.
Yeah, yeah.
Right to the, uh. Right to the, uh, be to the south of, um, Silvernagle, yep, yeah, the big Silvernagle place.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so you have the city in Strasburg is purchasing it from the county, so.
Okay, okay.
I entertain a motion to approve table or deny the county deed for the city Strasburg. I'll make a motion to approve it. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second?
Seconded by Commissioner Hall, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? County deed approved. With that, the agenda items are complete.
Can I, can I bring up with the, the city, the roads here in the city or not?
Yeah, it's a road project.
I guess I didn't.
Well, it was a part of the road projects discussion, we could probably entertain it, but yeah, since it's a special meeting, I'll just keep it short, listen.
Okay, yeah, let's be sure, uh, I talked to city foreman and I didn't realize it, but that road, they had the city engineer in there, and that road going by the Bald Diamond, they, the engineer claims that's the county road. And.
Going out to the back lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, but isn't that the one we kind of swapped, or?
That's part of the road, and that's why, you know, we had the agreement that we would do the north road and they'd do the south road, and he goes to me, well, that's actually your road. And that's why I, and, and we had signed off on the agreement a couple of years ago and the mayor, which I didn't know, they never did. But I had visited with the mayor and he said, we just need to get together and to, you know, come figure out what's what, so. That's where we're at right now, we'll just get together and sometime, try and come up with some kind of agreement.
Or they just put it on the agenda for the next meeting and come in, I wonder if it's just with them.
Yeah, I can talk to them.
Do that.
So the road up on eighty-three coming over to the church on the corner and then coming south on Main Street? And that's also county road system or is that the city?
That's county's.
I, you know, I, I think technically, if you were probably gonna say if it's outside of city limits, that's a county road.
That's what.
We always had what you'd call a handshake or gentleman's agreement that the city was helping us out with it, and maybe that's why it even got paved in the first place with some kind of agreement like that, but there was never anything in writing, so I would, I mean, cause that road I think is actually called, uh, is that seventy-eight, seventy-six?
Well, the old road from the baseball diamond going out to the back lane, that's old highway eighty-three.
Right, and I think, I think the idea is basically if it's outside of the city limits, then basically it's a county road.
County road, that's where it comes in, yeah.
So that's, that's probably what their argument, and I would say that that other road to the north side is probably ours too, cause I don't.
Well, I think we were sharing the expense with that, with the, with the county, with the city, right, for a long time.
Right.
Right.
And now.
Well, arguing.
We're gonna get the north, or south half, or we're gonna take the north half, right?
We were gonna do the north road and they were just gonna take care of this and then they, they never signed off and, no, they came up with that, that road's actually owned by the county.
So are they looking to talk and entertain an agreement now, no?
Well, they never did sign the agreement, so we're gonna have, we'll just have a.
They entertain?
Well, we'll talk to the, yeah, we'll talk to the mayor and try and come up with some kind of agreement on this deal.
Well, in respect to the city, I would assume that their argument is that if it's outside the city limits, they really don't even have the jurisdiction, so you could, you know, I mean, it's one of them deals, or it's kind of like with us with not going off the right-of-way, technically outside the city limits, they really probably.
Are they both technically or outside of the city?
According to this is that white line.
White line is the boundary.
So Josh is showing that essentially the city limits is literally like right on the south side of the Bald Diamond, it like splits the concrete plant almost, or like.
Yeah, it actually got lined probably like this.
Yeah.
Because this is out of.
So they wanted all the general way too to get that picture.
All the general guy, next and.
All the general got drawn in by hand, it looks like, but, uh, but yeah, and what about the north side, Josh, where does that city limit line end?
There's a few spots where it comes up to, actually, hold on.
Cause I know it's called Laurel Avenue, but that's also, but yeah, seventy-eight.
Yeah, so here, this whole section goes to Laurel Avenue.
So part of it is technically in city limits or at least up to that section line, so.
Yeah, and this is not, you know, the line here.
Sure.
So.
That's a costly maintenance, yep.
Well, and that is a little fishy there, yeah, and well, we might have to have a discussion on that then, because.
We just gotta come up with a gr, and the thing is, uh, city foreman told me that if it snows an inch or two, he goes out and actually crows that one north of town with his plate, cause he knows we won't go out with ours with only an inch or two of snow, so he actually goes out, so it's like, okay, do we just come up with an agreement or whatever, I guess that's something to think about until the next meeting. And put it on the agenda and go from there.
Well, I believe that road is actually designated as the emergency route for the ambulance too, so there's kind of.
Come down.
Right, I mean, somebody's usually gotta keep it open, so.
So they should be sharing the gravel that hill goes.
Well, I guess technically, if you wanted to argue that, yeah, they, their, their city limit goes all the way up to, uh, looks like Reitman's turnoff there, or no, not quite.
Yeah, Reitman's is
Yeah.
right out of town.
Right, so they're actually, yeah.
So that, growing up there would actually be.
So we.
That hill was part of the city limits, right?
According to this map, but yeah, yeah, so.
Was that, was that paved?
Yeah, could get paved now.
Why are they fighting with us?
Yeah, well, I, I don't think it's a plane, it's probably more just a discussion as far as.
Get the discussion and try and come up with an agreement.
I think it's probably just something that we just need to bring up again and see if we can, obviously the agreement we signed, we don't wanna sign, but there's probably an agreement to be had there, so.
You know, and the other thing, if we leave it as it is, where they, the two foremen just communicate between each other and go from there, or, we were just trying to come up with a user's solution, but I guess, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, well, I would say put it on the agenda for the next meeting and we'll see if they wanna come in and discuss it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, with that concluding all the items on the agenda, I entertain a motion to adjourn special meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Understood by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Terry, all those in favor? Alright, meeting adjourned.